Can we please have a call to order? Or a roll call, please.
Ms. Kurler?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Mrs. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Quinnow?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, everyone can please rise and join us for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next is correction and approval of city council regular meeting minutes on November 15th, 2022. Any comments or revisions? Can we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes from November 15th of 2022.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Kurler, second by Mr. Fields. All in favor, raise your hand. It's 5-0. Great. Next is correspondence. Mr. Fields?
I just had two items. I had the invite from Rock Lake Activities Center for this Thursday. I'm going to try and make it this Thursday for their meeting. And then I also received the APPA Legislative Rally invite from WPPI to go out to Washington DC. I haven't attended that once three or four years ago.
Okay, great. Ms. Kurler?
I received the same invitation for the Rock Lake Activity Center discussion. I'm not available on Thursday night, so I don't know if that's been scheduled or not, but I received that. And then I received one constituent correspondence regarding emergency services.
Okay, fantastic. I had correspondence on the Bayberry, Arlac, Mill Pond Channel, and the Sandy Beach Survey. I guess the survey got filled up and closed up, and I had a comment on that. But otherwise, we must have over 550 respondents there, so that's positive. Mrs. Bishop?
Yes, I also had correspondence for the Arlac meeting, which I am unable to attend. And I had correspondence regarding bike lanes in the city and their relationship in the comprehensive plan.
Ms. Quinnow?
I also had the same Rock Lake Activity Center email. I'm going to see if I can make it to one of the two and go from there. And then I also had correspondence from a constituent with regard to the construction that's happening in Brookstone. But thankfully, that's been rectified, to my knowledge.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you. All right. Next is a public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made on items, at this time, on items that are not on the agenda if you register with the city clerk before the meeting's been called to order. The state's open meeting laws discourage action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided. All right. So, public comment is now open. I think we have four signed up, so feel free to go whoever wants to go first.
I'm tied temporarily. At the last planned commission meeting, the city planner, when discussing comprehensive planning, stated, "In a situation where the council or community has decided what's facilities, it is up to the public works board to make it happen." Those comments suggest that the community and public works board are two distinct, separate groups. If the goal of the council is to get more members of the community to serve in boards, publicly labeling us as not members of the community is not very helpful. My experience with city government is that on any issue, one-third of the public is for it, one-third is against, and one-third does not care. There is no single community viewpoint. Marginalizing community members because they are not in the city planner's invite-only focus groups is just wrong. Who gave the city planner powers to define who gets to be included or excluded in that definition of community? The city planner is a non-city resident consultant. Defining the powers of the public works board is a private matter between the public works board and the city council. Who's giving them authority to act on behalf of the city council? Also, his statement that the comprehensive plan led to the South Main Bike, South Main Street bike lanes was false. At the time, council member Rudy Shar was on the public works board, and there was actually opposition against those bike lanes because the residents didn't want either to see the street widened or lose parking. But then the DOT came along and said, "If you want, I think it was $1.5 million to go for the street, you have to have the bike lanes." So, we pretty much caved in to the $1.5 million. It wasn't the comprehensive plan, because pretty much the public works board did not know about this until June. So, for source of information on what goes on in the public works board, that should not be the city planner. He does not attend those meetings, and I don't appreciate him giving out misinformation. Thank you.
Mr. Temperley, that took place at the Planning Commission?
Yes, it's on YouTube.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Temperley? Thank you. Next?
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Anita Martin. We live at 261 Pinnacle Drive in Lake Mills, and I'm also on the Jefferson County Board representing District 13. We've experienced two outbreaks of avian influenza, the H5N1 strain of bird flu here in Jefferson County over the last nine months. The first outbreak was in March at a commercial egg-laying operation in the town of Palmyra. Last month, a pheasant farm in Exonia was infected, resulting in the loss of about 170,000 pheasants. In Wisconsin, we've had a total of 29 outbreaks in 18 counties, including 18 in non-commercial operations or backyard flocks, mostly with chickens, turkeys, and ducks. This particular strain of avian flu is much different than the one in 2015. It's more resilient, more unpredictable, and more virulent and deadlier to wild birds, backyard birds, and commercial flocks. To date, more than 52 million birds have died in the U.S. as a result of H5N1 virus. This surpasses the bird deaths in the U.S. in the big outbreak in 2015, which involved H5N2. This H5N1 strain, which has at least three variants, has also infected about 12 different species of mammals, including bobcats, coyotes, foxes, minks, opossums, raccoons, and skunks. A number of people have also become ill this year as a result of the virus, including a worker in Colorado who was helping depopulate an infected farm, two workers in Spain, and most recently, this fall, a 38-year-old woman in China died of the virus. So, a few important things for all of us to keep in mind. There is a registration system in our state called the Wisconsin Livestock... Sorry. WLIC. I'll get it in a minute. It's designed to help the spread of avian influenza and other animal diseases, and also, it helps protect human health as well. There's been a little confusion with regards to this registration system. There is no cost to register, but if you keep one bird in your backyard, or three birds, or five, it is required by state law. To clear up a few things that we've been hearing, if you register your bird or your birds, that does not mean your birds will automatically be culled or killed if there's a disease outbreak nearby. What it does mean is that it helps protect you because you will receive notification that there's a disease outbreak nearby and what steps to take to protect your birds. The other misconception that we've been hearing is that when you buy your chicks, the supplier automatically notifies the Identification Consortium. Well, Wisconsin Livestock Identification Consortium of the existence of your site with your birds, and that is not the case. You need to register on your own. So, it's important to make sure that the information provided to that WLIC is current with your current cellphone number and current phone number, current address. The phone number to call to register if you have any birds is 1-888-808-1910, or registration's available online at www.wiid.org. For people when hunting pheasants, birds, ducks, geese, crows, and turkeys, it's important to exercise caution. Dress birds outside preferably, or if it's necessary to dress them indoors, to do so in a well-ventilated area, and they're recommending double gloves and preferably wearing an N95 mask. Birds can look quite healthy when in fact they may not be. Also, birds can shed the virus in their feces for up to two weeks before they show any signs of disease. Lastly, if you see a dead or sick bird or other wildlife when you're out or about, please contact the DNR at 608-267-0866. If you have any backyard bird or birds that appear ill, please call the Wisconsin Dadcap Division of Animal Health at 800-943-0003. If you would like more information, a good place to start would be to Google WIIDATCPHPAI, which stands for Highly Pathogenic Avian Influenza. Thank you for helping prevent the spread of this virus.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Patrick Doyle, 325 East Washington Street. Members of the city council, thank you for the opportunity to talk and you for listening. I'm here to talk about bike lanes on Lake Street. Last time I spoke with you, it was about bike lane on Lake Street as discussed by the public works board. Now I am finding there are similar discussions taking place at the Planning Commission level. To stay current, I met with Mr. Daley. He checked into it and forwarded me several documents. One is the bicycle plan from 2005 done by Strand. This plan explores bicycle lanes from Madison Street east on Lake Street and removing of all street parking on Lake. However, the same report also suggests that street parking does force traffic to slow down. We are requesting that the city council does not support the removal of street parking on Lake Street. One, a viable bike route already exists one block south on Water Street. Two, the removal of parking on Lake Street would increase the speed on this route, which is already a safety concern and is a designated truck route. And removal of street parking would significantly impact our business and possibly shut it down. When this plan was developed in 2005, Doyle's Dogs did not exist. We used, or using street parking for our business was discussed with the city manager at that time. We started our business. We have taken a blighted corner and turned it into a thriving destination for this community and the surrounding area. We employ around 18 students every summer and return thousands of dollars back to the community every year. We are asking for your support to allow us to continue to do so. Thank you for the time to talk.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Any questions? Thanks.
I'm Tom Murphy. I'd like to speak to the EMS proposals that were in the agenda. As a somewhat more knowledgeable, concerned citizen, under either plan proposals, we'd like to, I'd like to know if patients are going to be able to use their primary care hospitals, meaning ones in Conawak or Madison. Under the McMahon proposal, will a new fire station be needed to house EMS equipment and ambulances? And just running some primary preliminary numbers of what I know, it looks like this is going to run us about $65 per capita to offset the cost of what the new, their proposal is. I also don't understand how sharing EMTs for fire calls will work and still have an ambulance available for the community. Conversely, the same problem. Also don't understand how using duty crew members from the fire department to man a second ambulance and how we'll end up having firemen available or firepeople available to handle fire calls. Under the Ryan Brothers' proposal, in their proposal, they say they have other ambulances able to respond for second unit calls. To my knowledge, the nearest ambulance they have is about 15 miles away.
That was 1-5? 15? 1-5?
1-5.
Okay.
They will be down at Fort Atkinson. It's about the closest. Our records indicate also that they're proposing a paramedic-level ambulance. Lake Mills EMS records indicate we're using paramedics about 7% to 10% of the time. So, I thank you for the opportunity to speak. And if you have any other questions, I'll hang around until we cover that subject.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Is there any questions for him at this time? Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Any online? Looks like that's mostly city staff. All right, thank you. Moving forward, city manager's report. Mr. Daley?
I have nothing to report at this time. If you have any questions or anything, I'm happy to answer.
So, in our packet, you included the Lake Mills Fire Department medical response times.
Yep, we've been including that monthly, I believe at the request of the city council, and Chief Yandre has been assisting in putting that together, and he's in attendance tonight if you did have any questions on that document.
Any questions? All right, seeing none. Thank you. Next is council member board reports and acceptance of minutes from the Police and Fire Commission of October 20th, 2022, Plan Commission of October 25th, 2022, and Plan Commission of November 10th, 2022. Is there any comment or further reporting than what we saw in our reporting, in our reports? Yes?
I do have a comment, and since the last two Plan Commission meeting minutes are here, I feel it's appropriate to discuss them. Yes, the Plan Commission has discussed bike routes generally, and I have made comments in the last two meetings reflected here. My comments are not reflected in the minutes, but the two meetings on October 25th and then November 10th. Actually, I think that was a work session. But the point stands.
It was November 22nd.
That's correct, yeah. So, anyway, my comments have been in regard to the concern that the public works board and Plan Commission are maybe working at opposite ends or, you know, on the same thing, and maybe that's not appropriate. And my comments have been that the Plan Commission has has and should only be making recommendations to the council about what transportation plans should be. And our conversations have been that those plans that we look at as a council should include considering bike trails. It is not to usurp the role of the public works board that has been tasked to establish those bike routes. And then, even if the public works board does have a recommendation for bike routes, it is ultimately at the council level to approve or disprove. So, I have made those comments at those meetings. I've tried to make those comments to clarify the roles between the two boards and to also state that ultimately it is the council's decision and that no decision has been made yet, even if general recommendations to consider bike paths have been put forth at the Plan Commission meetings. So, I'm open to any questions on that issue, but I have tried to make that clear at those meetings.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll accept these minutes into our report. Council business. Before we get into council business, I'm going to move the EMS discussion, item B, to the very end of this council business so that it won't interfere with, that's probably going to be a long item, so I wanted to move the rest of that business forward so that if people are here for those issues, they don't have to stay an extra hour to, for their items to come up. Okay? So, item A on the agenda is the discussion decision on Humane Society contract. There is a city council motion. Misty, can you read that?
City Council Motion 22-12-1-1, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the City of Lake Mills and Humane Society of Jefferson County.
Can you repeat that number for me one more time? Fantastic. Thank you. Can we have a motion?
I want to clarify. She said 42 or 22?
She said 42.
Yeah.
22.
I'm sorry, what?
22.
Okay, thank you. I move to accept motion 22-12-1-1, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the City of Lake Mills and Humane Society of Jefferson County. I'll second.
All right, motion by Ms. Kurler, by Ms. Quinnow, second by Ms. Kurler. Did you get that, Misty?
Yes, thank you.
Fantastic. All right, staff discussion.
This is an annual approval. There's a letter from the Humane Society included in your packet. In summary, we are seeing a 7.2% decrease in our rate for next year. There is a slight change in the services being provided in that they will continue to do pickup during normal business hours, but after-hours and overnight pickups, they will no longer be providing. So, those are the cost decrease and that change in service are the changes from the 2022 contract.
All right, any questions or comments? All right, seeing none. Let's move to a roll call vote. Misty?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Kurler?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
All right, thank you. Next is item B, which we're going to hold till the end of the, this section. So, we'll move to item C, which is Resolution 22-58A. Misty, can you read that?
Resolution 22-58A, resolution declaring official 2023 utilities budget.
All right, so this item is currently tabled, so we need a motion to pull it off the table?
I'll make a motion to remove Resolution 22-58A from the table.
Second.
Motion to remove from table by Ms. Kurler, second by Mr. Fields. All in favor, please raise your hand. That's 5-0.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 22-58A, the official 2023 utilities budget.
Second.
Motion to approve by Ms. Kurler, second by Ms. Quinnow. Staff discussion.
If you'll remember, last time, we tabled this due to a confusion over largely the electric utility budget. We did discover a typo in the budget document, which then formulates into the resolution. It overstated an expense. There was a 2 where there should have been a 1, so it overstated an expense by just over $100,000. So, by correcting that, you do see that in each of the utility budgets, the revenues are exceeding the expenditures. I would just remind the council that as enterprise funds, these budgets are a little bit more flexible than our general fund accounts, so they don't necessarily have to balance exactly like our general fund does, and that they are a little bit more flexible throughout the year. But they are all currently having revenues exceeding expenditures after we corrected that error.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, can we move to a roll call, Misty?
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Kurler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you. Next, item D is Resolution 22-59. Misty, can you please read that?
Resolution 22-59, authorizing the city manager to direct the treasurer to transfer funds, capital budget.
Thank you. Can we have a motion?
I move to accept Resolution 22-59, authorizing the city manager to direct the treasurer to transfer funds, capital budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Quinnow, second by Mr. Fields. Staff comment?
Do you have any questions in regards to my memo and what was carried over? Excuse me.
So, this is to carry over the projects that did not get completed in 2022, so those funds will fall into 2023?
Yes. The first one is the comprehensive plan that is ongoing at this time. The second is the police computer equipment that was, has been ordered this year but will not be received until next year. The cemetery roads will be completed in 2023, and the public works streets, maintenance, street rebuilds, sidewalks, miscellaneous improvements, remaining balance carried over to next year. Street Department for the stormwater, the Oak Street final engineering, and College Street preliminary engineering for next year's Oaks, or College Street repairs, and any miscellaneous improvements in engineering is remaining, and then the tap grant costs.
So, we're talking roughly $419,000?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Yes?
I have a question, and I guess it's not a concern about the transfer so much, but it looks like we've spent almost all of the budgeted amount for the comprehensive plan, so there's not a lot to be carried over, and I, it, just keeping watch on the progress of the comprehensive plan, it looks like there's a little ways to go. Is there any concern that we don't, haven't budgeted enough or that we're going to go over costs on that project?
I don't believe so, because we have a contract for that amount. So, we should not go unless they come back and say we're going to go over, then we would bring that to council for approval for the additional funds.
Okay, so it's contracted specifically for that amount. Okay, thank you.
Based on the schedule, Mrs. Bishop, you can correct me, but it sounds like we're basically looking at January, maybe it might fall into February to wrap that up?
Yeah, going into February, we extended some of the timeline for the survey, and a couple of meetings were canceled, which is the reason why we're a little behind.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, let's move to roll call. Misty?
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Kurler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Resolution 22-60. Can you read that, Misty?
Resolution 22-60, acceptance of public infrastructure reduction, release of financial guarantee, North Shore Estates LLC.
Thank you. Can we have a motion?
If I may, I believe a updated resolution was handed out to you prior to the meeting, so it should be, the motion would be for 22-60A.
I move to approve Resolution 22-60A, acceptance of public infrastructure reduction and release of financial guarantee for North Shores Estates LLC.
I'll second.
All right, a motion for Resolution 22-60A, which is the new resolution that was handed out today, was made by Mrs. Bishop and a second by Ms. Curler. Can you outline what the changes are on this Resolution A?
Sure. The resolution that was passed out to you allows for a final drawdown from that letter of credit to pay for final outstanding invoices related to the project. So we -- I did touch base with the owner, the project applicant, and their desire was to have that drawn down to cover those expenses. So it's a final drawdown of the remaining invoices that are -- that we have billed out for the costs incurred by the city in review and support of the project, and those funds will come from the remaining letter of credit, and the remainder will be released to the owner, and we'll have final closeout of the project.
So this is just basically outlining the dollar amount, then? Is that what happened, basically?
That's correct.
Okay.
So can you -- oh, sorry. Let me ask.
Go ahead.
Mr. Daly, can you just clarify, then, the mechanics of how this will work? So a letter of credit is not actually dollars, so how will we get those funds? And we have to release the letter first by this resolution tonight, and then they'll pay us? Is that how it's going to work?
Sam can speak to it, but essentially, there actually is -- there are funds that the bank is holding as a letter of credit. So there was, I think, around $20,000 remaining, and so when we release that final letter of credit, fully release it, that money, those funds are released back to the person that is -- that's holding that letter of credit open for us. And so there are actually dollars that will then come to us from that letter of credit, and the remainder then gets released back to the property owner, in this case.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just looking at a document from Strand on October 24th, which is in our notes, and it's outlining around $20,700. So this is about half of that that we're talking about here?
Correct, a little over, but very close.
So we still retain the rest of those funds at this point?
No. After we complete our drawdown of $11,757.90, the remainder that's on that letter of credit will be fully released. So it will no longer be -- the letter of credit will no longer be held, and there are no -- we have no expenses that would necessitate that. The public improvements have been accepted and have completed their warranty period.
So this completely fulfills the obligation, then?
Correct.
Bear with me, I just want to look at something else real quick. Any other questions or comments while I'm looking?
So maybe just to make sure we've all got this, so the original resolution was accepting the public infrastructure and releasing the letter of credit, and since that original resolution, we've discovered that they still owe us some funds, so this revised resolution is just to make sure that we get those funds, and that comes out of the letter of credit.
That is correct.
All right, any other questions? Misty, roll call, please.
Mr. Fields?
Oh, wait a minute, we're voting on Resolution 22-60A, just for clarity. Sorry about that, Misty. One more time.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Next is Resolution 22-61. Misty, can you read that resolution, please?
Resolution 22-61, authorizing the Lake Mills Police Chief to sign an agreement to participate in the law enforcement support office program.
Can we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 22-61, authorizing the Lake Mills Chief to -- Police Chief to sign an agreement to participate.
Your mic's not on.
I'm sorry. I'll start over. I make a motion to approve Resolution 22-61, authorizing the Lake Mills Police Chief to sign an agreement to participate in the law enforcement support office program.
Motion by Ms. Curler, second by Mr. Fields. And I can hear you perfectly, right next to you. All right, staff comment, please.
Chief, would you mind coming up and providing a summary of this item?
Did you know that was going to happen?
I assumed it probably would. Good evening.
Good evening, Chief.
So we have participated in this program. It was formerly known as the 1033 Program, if you've heard of that. It allows local governments and law enforcement agencies to obtain equipment from the government at no cost to the agency. It's normally military surplus equipment or government surplus equipment. We currently have in our possession two M14 rifles that are used for our honor guard and for ceremonial purposes only. We obtain them through the program, but they're considered controlled property. So we have every year had to submit to an audit to make sure and confirm that we have that property in our possession and that we are still using the property. President Biden signed an executive order recently that requires the civilian governing board, which would be the city council in our case, to approve participation in this program on an annual basis. So that's what the resolution does, is it requests your approval for us to continue to participate. I put two things in the letter that I wrote to you. One was to be able to retain the two M14 rifles for our honor guard. The other is a possible request for less lethal munitions or impact munitions for our 40-millimeter launcher. I don't at this time anticipate requesting those this year, but one of the other requirements under this program now is that we have to have approval from our civilian governing board 30 days in advance of any request for any additional property from this program. So approval of this request will essentially cover us for the next 12 months, in the event that I do request any of those specified items in that letter. Another requirement is I would have to do a public notice 30 days in advance of any request, but I will cover that if we cross that bridge. So I'm just requesting approval to continue to participate in the program, understanding now it's essentially to retain the two M14 rifles that we have.
Thank you, Chief Schroeder. Is there any questions? Fantastic, thanks. Can we have a roll call, please, on Resolution 22-61?
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Next is Item G. It's Resolution 22-62. Misty, can you please read that resolution?
City Council Resolution 22-62, conditional use permit declarations and findings, Henry T. Guybe II and Pamela M. McCormick Guybe, grading filling and excavation on a slope greater than 20% within 300 feet of the ordinary high watermark of Rock Lake for the purpose of redevelopment of retaining walls and stairs within the vision and access corridor and alternative vegetative cutting plan, 400 West Lake Park Place, Lake Mills, parcel identification number 24607131441009.
Thank you. Can we have a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 22-62, conditional use request from Pam and Hank. I know she just said it is Guybe. In the single-family residential district R1-6 with lake shore residential overlay, 400 Lake Park Place, parcel 24607131441009.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Bishop, second by Ms. Quidnow. Staff comment?
With your permission, Mr. Karanza is attending remotely and can provide a summary on this item and the summary of the Plan Commission's recommendation.
Thanks, guys. So I'm going to share my screen here, so hopefully you guys can see that.
Yep, we got it.
Bear with me. See if I can share the proper one. There we go. Got to share the memo there. There we go. So ultimately, what we're looking at here is conditional use requests similar to what we've had in recent months in the city. The existing stairs are in need of repairs, and the petitioner is looking to improve accessibility with the project. The slope in the area of the project exceeds the 20% sort of condition as far as conditioning use permits being needed, and then there are also some superficial vegetative improvements outside the vision and access corridor that would also require a conditional use permit. At Plan Commission, the neighbors to the south did indicate that they were not in support of a portion of the plan to remove and replace some vegetation on the property boundary that would be located on the property to the south. The petitioner did submit at Plan Commission's recommendation a revised plan, and I'll highlight that here, that ultimately showcased removal of plantings solely on their property. So that was a recommendation from Plan Commission, but ultimately, they have already provided those plans. And then ultimately, the stairways are boathouse access stairways. They are currently existing non-conforming because they -- the combination of the boathouse as well as the -- let me get to graphic here. Combination of the boathouse and stairs exceed the allotted area of vision access corridor, which would be 18 feet based on the shoreline width. In this case, the existing stairs and retaining wall would be removed and essentially altered, and by doing so, remaining within their non-conforming status, in this case, the 24 feet that is provided here. The grading and excavation component of this, the petitioner did provide a memo that outlines the erosion control measures, and staff believes that those are sufficient to meet the expectations of the ordinance. And then the alternative vegetative cutting plan, as I mentioned before, they are fairly superficial in nature. The intention is to sort of replace plantings that are located on the first tier here of the retaining wall with a selection that's somewhat more biodiverse, and then ultimately more representative of kind of native plantings in the area. So ultimately, staff does recommend this based on the staff memo and then the additional condition recommendation by Plan Commission that the improvements remain solely on the property itself, or the actual removal of plantings remain on the property itself.
Is there any questions for Mr. Karanza? I see the Guybes are in attendance tonight. Did you want to make any comments?
I've been at petitions that they recommended. If you've been on it, probably.
Okay, anything else? Okay. Then we won't suspend the rules. We'll just leave it as is. Any other comments? Yes?
I just had a couple of questions. And one, maybe Mrs. Bishop, you might recall, I was at that Plan Commission meeting or listened in, and I think there was also a concern from the neighbors about construction vehicle access, and I -- but I think that got addressed in the Plan Commission's approval. Is that your understanding as well?
It did, in that the motion clarified we were only approving improvements made on the parcel at issue.
And then any construction vehicles that needed to access their property would have to stay on their property? Or it would be between them and the neighbor to work that out? Is that kind of the?
I'm going to step on the city attorney's toes for a minute here and that -- and just say that that would be a civil issue if somebody were to encroach on somebody else's property and not necessarily for Plan Commission comment or direction.
Got it. Okay, thanks. Because I remember there was some discussion, and I wanted to make sure that we were all clear that that was addressed. Another question I had that I contacted Mr. Daly about earlier today, and I just wanted to have the rest of the council hear about this. I guess I had -- I had had a question about since the existing structures are wider than the allowed -- normally allowed viewing and access corridor, and they're legal because they predated that requirement, but since they're removing the steps and the retaining wall, I asked, you know, is that the opportunity then to bring it into conformance or bring it closer to conformance rather than making wider steps? And Brian, you got -- you sent an email back to Drake about that. I was wondering if you could just kind of summarize your understanding of how that works.
Yeah, certainly. So ultimately, in this case, the stairs are ultimately part of the structure with the boathouse. Ultimately, in this particular circumstance, you can't use the boathouse without the access stairs. So the nonconformance really is that it exceeds the 18 feet, and as long as they alter the existing structure, meaning the stairs and an alteration in that being the stairs to widen within that 24 feet, they are still within the permissions within that nonconforming statute. Does that clarify your comment?
Yes, thank you. Again, I'm just trying to think about, you know, when somebody removes a structure, it seems like that's the time to, you know, address any concerns that we might have rather than, you know, coming in after somebody's already replaced it or something like that. So I just wanted to make sure I understood, you know, how that requirement might apply there. And is there anything in our bulk regulations that specifies a width for steps, or is that really just up to the property owner, how -- what size of staircase they want to have?
Yeah, there are no specific bulk requirements for step width. There would be potentially some building code I'm not as versed in, that I speak with the building inspector on, but I think it's just sort of standard in terms of universal kind of height of the riser and length of the tread. In terms of width here, I would say it definitely improves the, you know, accessibility, just because there is a wider area for potential missteps. You're not going to, you know, have the kind of potential fall hazard as you might on a narrower step. But that just from, you know, my personal experience walking downstairs, obviously, and then the expectation being that a wider area provides some of that relief.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, let's move to a roll call on Resolution 22-62.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you. Next is Ordinance 1250A. This is a third reading. Misty, can you please give us a third reading?
Ordinance 1250A, amending Chapter 573 Streets and Sidewalks, Article 9 Pedestrian Malls, Section 573-39 Pedestrian Malls Designated, and Section 573-40 Restrictions and Prohibitions of Vehicular Traffic in Pedestrian Malls.
All right, can we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 1250A, amending Chapter 573 and Sections 573-39 regarding pedestrian malls designated and 573-40 regarding restrictions and prohibitions of vehicular traffic in pedestrian malls.
Second.
Was that Mrs. Bishop? All right. Motion by Ms. Curler, second by Mrs. Bishop. Staff comment?
I don't have any further comment than what's been said in past meetings, but if there are any questions, Attorney Drusher is on, is attending remotely. there are any questions Attorney Drescher is attending remotely.
Hi, everybody. I'm certainly here. I hope you can hear me okay.
Yes.
There was a change. It was discussed after the second reading, and the change, maybe Ms. Curler would even like to discuss it. It attempted to improve kind of uniformity in the treatment of all such pedestrian malls while maintaining specific treatment for the widest pedestrian mall, kind of a unique pedestrian mall, that being Ford Court. So I think if you review 1250A as provided, understand that the amendments to Section 573-40, I believe is the reference, are the changes and its attempt to kind of create uniformity and clarity in enforcement actions as well.
And so perhaps I'll just add, as the sponsor of this, I worked with Attorney Drescher on addressing 573-40, which we recognized we needed to address based on the changes to 573-39, and kind of found some internal inconsistencies between particularly Letters B and C, and so we've tried to clean that up and, as Mr. Drescher said, make it more consistent what types of vehicles, non-motorized vehicles are allowed in pedestrian malls, but retain the specific allowance for certain vehicles that Ford Court currently enjoys so to keep that in place.
All right, any additional comments or questions? So this is a third reading, so we need to do a roll call here for Ordinance 1250A. Misty, can you do a roll call?
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
All right, thank you. Now let me unwind here and get back to Item B. Thank you for everybody that held tight while we did the rest of our business, and now we can talk EMS. So this is the discussion decision on EMS options, or Emergency Medical Service options. So there is no motion at this point, so let's turn it right over to staff comment.
With your permission, I will ask Robert Whitaker with McManan Associates to present on the staffing study that was completed and included in the packet.
Thank you. Please.
So, good evening and thanks for having us tonight. My name is Robert Whitaker. I'm with McManan Associates. We are contracted with the city to do a staffing analysis for your broader staff, but specifically was asked to prioritize the emergency service staffing side of the project prior to the end of the year. I work with a team of different municipal background and managers. My professional background is on emergency services, but we have team members that are city administrators, city managers, and similar positions, and do those professionally currently or are retired in those positions. So we looked at, as part of this study, the staffing and the issue that I think you're probably very accustomed to just from reading through city documents and the documentation that Mr. Daly and the staff provided, you're facing an issue that many other communities around the country are facing today, and that's communities that are growing, that have relied on paid-on-call or volunteer services, both on fire and EMS, for many years, and those now face challenges as the general public and the citizens aren't necessarily as inclined to volunteer or work part-time. The workforce has reduced in general, and the professional requirements to maintain those skill sets have gone up. So you are not unlike many of the clients that I'm working with for our firm or other firms like us are working with around the country today. So as part of the study, we looked at, when we're talking emergency services, the municipal side of the fire department, but we also had an opportunity to talk to the EMS operation. Both staffs were very welcoming and inviting to us, provided information we asked for generally, and we have been able to take that information and then put together a proposal that, as Mr. Daly said, is in your packet tonight. So we looked at where you're at today, where you've been at in the past, and we also looked at your future needs and identified any opportunities, changes, process improvements, and then optimal staffing is necessary. Part of that study also had to do with compensation levels, and that will be flushed out a little more later on as we finish the whole project up. So as you're probably well aware, you operate as a municipality of fire department. You have, the fire department has contracts with several surrounding townships for service. Lake Mills EMS is a 501(c)(3), providing service to the city and several of the same townships under a contract based on a per capita rate, so per person is the charge. And Lake Mills EMS has, as I'm sure you're aware, indicated to the city that there are some challenges in their funding mechanism and that without a change in that mechanism, they likely will discontinue to serve or be able to provide service into the middle of June of 2023 in some time. So we can move forward there on the slide. So overall, fire department is what we call a combination fire department, so there's some mix of full-time and paid-on-call, paid-on-premise, or volunteer type of staff. Thirty-four members, full-time chief, full-time captain is also, in some city documents titled as the fire inspector, so that's his primary role, and the remainder of the members are part-time. They, like I said, have contracts with several of your surrounding townships for service, which is a revenue source that the city has for service. What are those challenges? I talked about them a little while ago. Any, well, municipal services in general, especially in Wisconsin, face many challenges with levy limits and other things that are in effect today, but the department faces recruitment and retention challenges just like many other paid-on-call or part-time departments have. They have, though, been successful, I will say, in creating an environment where they have a group of people that continue to desire to serve. They have an on-call system that requires the employees or the members to put time in so they are available for on-call, and that does allow for a commitment to a response in off-hours, so in other words, evenings and weekends. So we looked at the organizational structure of the fire department. Currently, we have some recommendations on job description changes, which will be in our final report. I know in speaking to the chief, he potentially has looked at opportunities to retire in the future, and so you may, as a city, as the Police Department Commission, may have to look at replacing him. We have some recommendations about the job description for that position, too, that'll be in the packet. The EMS side is governed by a board of directors. It's a 501(c)(3), full-time EMS director, 17 members, according to the website. They operate at what's called an Emergency Medical Technician Advanced Level. The state has several different levels of service in EMS licensing, anywhere from Emergency Medical Responder, which is called EMR generally, all the way up to paramedic, and then there's a Critical Care Paramedic and things like that. So EMT Advanced is sort of in the middle. It's not on the top, it's not on the bottom, but they operate three ambulances, and the calls for service are on the presentation there, going up, just like most EMS services are in every place. As the communities have aged, people are aging in place, communities are growing, and reliance on what someone probably 25 years ago, when I first became an EMT, would call 914 is a whole lot different than what they call 9114 today to get an ambulance. The EMS service also has contracts with several of the townships that surround you. They have a $15 per person per capita fee. That's how they generate some of their revenue to support their operation. And like the fire department and other agencies, any operation that's reliant on part-time, paid-on-call, volunteer type of service is challenged today. We all have busier lives. We all have, if you have kids, you have busier lives. They have something every night of the week, and to go to a training on Monday nights, every Monday night or every other Monday night, and then wear a pager and get called in at random times of the day is really challenging, and then potentially go to your full-time job the next morning after you've been out on two or three calls. So EMS, we did meet with the EMS staff, and we were able to talk about their operation, some of the challenges they face. They have, in addition to their per capita revenue, and this is not uncommon for EMS services, they charge fees for service, so pay for transport, generally insurance will pay that, Medicare, Medicaid, private insurance is the big payer. For Lake Mills, your Medicaid is, or Medicare is your highest payer. Private insurance is about 17 or 18%, so you're really heavily reliant on your Medicare patients, a little higher than what we see in a lot of other places. I think it was 72% Medicare payer population. So the challenge with Medicare and Medicaid is that you can send them a bill and you have a rate for service, let's say it's $800 to transport someone to the hospital, and that's what the service says is our rate. You send that bill to Medicare or Medicaid, right now, they'll pay you around $200, and they'll say, "We're not paying anymore." Private payer may, private insurance may and likely will pay more, depending on what your structure of your plan is, whether you have a high deductible, whether you have copay and things like that. But where, in EMS, where the money is at is in private insurance, if you have a high private payer population, which you don't have. You have, I think, and that's really dependent on who's using the service. It's not, it's not something that you can control as a city government. So we looked at the challenges that are faced, and like I said before, we have clients in Wisconsin, in Minnesota, in Illinois, in other states that today are having the same exact conversation you're having. Other firms that do work, that I have friends who do this for other firms, are doing the exact same thing around the state right now, as Wisconsin has, not unlike other states, had challenges getting volunteers and paid-on-call, but there are restrictions on what local government can bring in on a revenue side to pay for those services. So we looked at a couple of options, and our team, like I said, is composed of people with professional background in fire and EMS, like myself, and municipal management people who have worked in the field as professional municipal managers. So we said, as a team looked at the data we came up with and got from the fire department, EMS, and from Jefferson County 911, and looked at, how does this all work, and said, "Okay, what about maintaining the current system?" And the current system, at its current funding level, is not working. I think that's why we're here today. So that really isn't a viable option. Increased funding could create a viable option for the current system, but that is a significant, that's an increase in funding. We said, "Okay, what if the fire or the city created a standalone EMS department?" And I think that's been discussed prior to today as an option, and looked at that. We said, "Okay, can the fire department take an EMS? That's not an uncommon structure you'll see in municipalities." We looked at a private option and said, "What's out there for a private option?" So private EMS. I know in, there's some information from Ryan Brothers in your packet, there are private EMS off-service in the area. They have other contracts in this area. There are other providers that do that type of work in the area. I know one of them who's not Ryan Brothers, a different one, that does private EMS, who has pretty much as many challenges finding employees to do that work as your current service does, and they aren't looking to expand because they can't keep their workforce sufficient to expand, so they're challenged with that. The other option that I think deserves whatever you decide moving forward is to continue, and I know there's been some discussion about regionalization in this area, the Wisconsin Policy Forum did a study, but I think as you move forward with whatever option you look at for short term, you have to solve a problem, but long-term, I can't, I keep coming back to that as a solution that I think the city needs to look at. As I looked around, sort of looked at your surrounding communities as part of this study, you're all facing the same problem. The same problem right now is being discussed in Johnson Creek, the same problem is being discussed in Jefferson, the same problem is being discussed in Cambridge. It's a common problem that is not unusual. The workforce is not, there's not going to be more workers out there in the near future. The workforce is what it is. The technical college system is not churning out hundreds and hundreds of paramedics today, and so you're faced with a challenge as to how do you provide service, probably with full-time employees, to respond to emergencies in what can be a rural area in some of your areas, can be suburban, I guess I'll call it, in some areas, and people that are moving to the area are probably expecting, instead of a 20-minute response time, they're going at six minutes, "Where's the ambulance? I call 911," because they have come from an area that was more urbanized, and that's the service level they're accustomed to. So when we looked at all those options, and we had some good discussion on our team about those options, one of the things we saw is you have a challenge with your EMS system, but you also have a challenge in the fire department. And that is the same challenge, is getting people to do this type of job on a part-time basis and be available 24/7, so when that thing on my hip goes off, I not only answer it, but I get in my car and I drive to the fire station or the ambulance and then respond. And unfortunately, that is not the nature of today's young people. They want to know when they work, they want to be done at 8 o'clock when the shift is over, and they don't want to answer a pager or a phone and have to come back to work when it's their off time. And I was having a discussion with a peer of mine, my full-time job is I'm a fire and EMS chief, a municipal fire and EMS chief. I was having a discussion with a peer of mine. In a full-time department, it is not uncommon to an overtime rate of $45 an hour, so that's good money. If I can work overtime, that's really good money. I can't convince some of my current employees to come in for overtime today at $45 an hour, just because of the workforce. They don't want, they want to be off. So to convince them to come in for $15 an hour, $18 an hour, $22 an hour, is, I don't see as a viable option moving forward in most places. So you have that challenge in the fire department, you have that challenge in the ambulance. So our team is recommending you look at bringing EMS into the city government as a part of the fire department. There are a lot of moving parts to this discussion because you have revenue from townships for the fire department. EMS has revenue on contract from those townships. It can't be a guaranteed, a guaranteed promise that those townships with the EMS contracts are going to contract with the city for EMS service. So your revenue is a little bit unknown on your contracts with your towns. The towns may say, "We're going to go down the road to the next person that offers service." So we had trouble really saying, "Okay, we're going to guarantee you," or "I can't stand here and say I'm going to guarantee you X coming in the door." The city would need to go seek those contracts out and negotiate contracts with those towns. We can make some assumptions that they're going to contract with you or maybe expand, but we can only make that assumption. So currently, you have a full-time fire chief and a full-time captain. The team from McMan is proposing and suggesting you would add a captain to that staff, who would basically be your EMS director, so your service director. So you would have a full-time fire slash EMS chief, a full-time captain who's doing the fire prevention inspections, which you have today. An additional full-time position would be the EMS director, who would manage the EMS operation but would also be fire-trained. EMS operation but would also be fire-trained. So these are people that are both fire and EMS-trained. So it gives you the option or the capability to respond to both types of emergencies. The daytime staffing is a bigger challenge in departments like Lake Mills than evening staffing is a little easier to deal with because you have people home from work, they're willing to, maybe willing to come in. So your daytime hours, which is where your call volume is the highest, is your toughest, is your, is your toughest challenge to, to respond. So we are recommending two people on duty 24/7. So that takes, to cover all three shifts, you have to have six people to do that. During the day, the captains would be available, so you would have extra staffing when your paid-on-call staffing is the lightest. So in other words, the least likely to be available. We would continue, and I think it's integral, that the paid-on-call still be part of your fire and EMS operation. They, they continue, they will need to be part of that department for a long time moving forward. So it's just that the reliance on that first call out can be, some of that pressure on the paid-on-call today can be taken off by having full-time staff in the station. This chart's really busy, and I, I, our team debated, how do we best portray this? And, but what it generally says is there would be, every day of the week, there'd be sort of three, three different staffing models throughout the day. So from midnight to oh seven hundred on the weekends, you would have your two full-time on-duty staff members. They would be supplemented by, and this would actually be all Saturday and Sunday, so I'll clarify that, at all times. They'd be supplemented by three paid-on-call, a duty crew, which is, the fire department does that today. They have people that are assigned to a duty crew, and they're, this is your shift. If the pager goes off, you're coming in. One of those would be an officer, so someone that could take command of an incident and be in charge. During the week, the overnight hours would be staffed by the two full-time people that are working 24-hour shifts. They would again be supplemented by duty crew. So your reliance on paid-on-call in the evenings and the weekends would continue and needs to continue. During the day, we are suggesting that during the weekday daytime hours from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, you have the two full-time people that would be on duty, but the supplement staffing, the captains would be there and the chief would be there. And depending on hours, how you would rotate them, they would work 40-hour schedules. You would probably have to put in some part-time hours, but at minimum you'd have four people in the station during the week, during the day. If the chief is there, you have five. So that gives you some depth for, to cover two EMS calls at the same time or one more serious call. It also gives you five people to cover fire incidents. In, in the state of Wisconsin, there's administrative code that says to, to start an interior fire attack, you need to have five people on the scene. So it gives you an incident commander and what they call two in, two out. So you have five people on duty during the day, during the week, when your paid-on-call staffing is least likely to be available. You can move forward on the slide. So I think I covered some of this, actually I covered most of it. The staff, when they're on duty, you can continue to do fire inspections, which is what you're doing today, equipment maintenance, there's a lot of work that can be accomplished that needs to be accomplished in the fire station. And on the weekday, overnights and weekends, there's opportunity for part-time paid-on-call to still be part of the organization in the department. So we laid out a timeline, and I was talking to Mr. Daly a little bit today in preparation for coming here tonight, and some of the timelines that you may be under due to some of the, the actions that maybe need to take into fund this, because it's a 2023 budget year, and we are at December 4th, 6th, 2022. I just, the time, the days keep moving. So you need that six months that Lake Mills EMS has offered to, to extend out. You need that to get this up and running, no matter what happens. We would propose that in January, you start a hiring process for those firefighters and EMTs and the EMS director, which would be a rank of a captain, and we picked that since it's equivalent in the organizational chart to what the full-time person is today. You could start, depending on how the hiring process goes, to start bringing in what, what's called paid-on-premise, that's more of a part-time person in the station, depending on how your funding mechanism goes and what's available. But what, what I did here is this lays out to get to June to actually get the program fully up and running. So it's really not until June till you're up and running. So there's a transition plan that Lake Mills EMS continues to be your primary service provider. The fire department is the secondary provider with the ambulance they currently have. You have some legwork to do to bring in a, somebody to do your billing, RFP for that, so there's some administrative function that would need to happen over the next couple of months. Go ahead with the slide. So February, hire your, your director. That person could be on board then to start helping to hire the firefighter EMTs with the chief and the other captain. And then you could stagger your hiring, hiring six people at once to all of a sudden infuse them into a fire department that really has very minimal full-time staffing is a, is a big, big job to do at once. So the suggestion is you stagger them over a course of a couple of months to then get you to June, which allows the current staff to train them, then get accustomed to the area, learn everything they need to learn, so when the next group comes in that you're hiring, there's someone there to show them the way. You can move forward. So this is June, implement that, the schedule as we recommend, and then at that point you transition to the primary provider for EMS calls. You can go ahead with the slide. As we looked at revenue, and what's that, what's the dollars look like? Because that's the, that's, other than service, that's going to be your important piece here. One of the key points that, as I said before, a revenue source that the EMS services have is charging fees for your service. We looked at about what could you charge for services? Lake Mills EMS does charge fees today. They expect, and they, and their history would show their, the revenue is about three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year on fees. And like I said before, you can charge, and I think I've, I looked at their total charges, they're charging out somewhere around nine-hundred-thousand dollars is what the bills they're sending out for. Three fifty is what they're going to get. Their company that's doing their billing is a good company. I've worked with them before. It's, it's, they're doing a good job to get the most dollars they can out of it. So it's not that you have a, you're not getting the money that you're, you should be getting. They're, they're doing a good job. Midwest average, Midwest median, the written report has more detail in it, but you probably could raise your rates, or from what Lake Mills EMS is charging, you could probably look at raising your rates a little bit. There's, there's a little more money out there. And where you're going to gain that, like I said before, is on private pay. It's only about eighteen percent of your revenue source, so it's not, you're not going to get a hundred thousand dollars out of raising rates. You're going to get ten thousand dollars maybe out of a rate, rate re-increase. You can slide forward. So your per capita charge is where there's, there's a lot of what-if. So Lake Mills EMS charges the city a per capita rate. The city incorporates that into your levy or somewhere it's being funded on a revenue side of your budget. I don't believe there's a mechanism for the city to put a per capita charge for EMS on your tax bill. So you would, you would have to build that into your levy. And it's probably somewhere in the levy now, it's just when we talk about charging in revenue, we're talking about per capita, but on your, on your, on your city budget, there's a, it's somewhere in the levy. So that amount is at fifteen dollars today, so you're, you're probably somewhere in your budget is about ninety-four thousand dollars for EMS. The other towns, I looked at total population, even though Lake Mills EMS is not servicing the entire area in all these towns. So they're servicing about a ninety-six-hundred total people, there's about twelve thousand people in those municipal boundaries that you could pick up. So your maximum, if you looked at, hey, what do they get, what are they bringing in today? Is about a hundred seventy-seven thousand. That's more than they're bringing in today, I should say, because they're not servicing all those people. They're at about ninety-six-hundred people. The hundred seventy-seven thousand accounts for about the twelve thousand. Now, if you had full-time service, maybe those towns would expand your contract, but that goes back to my earlier comments, is some of this is reliant on negotiating with those towns. We did attempt to reach out to several of the towns to talk about this. I, I got some that were very interested to talk and some that were not interested at all in talking about it. So it was, I guess, a mixed reaction, I'll tell you. So at ninety-six-hundred population with your ambu, with the ambulance revenue, we expect that you're going to get about four-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand dollars on the revenue side. There's what's called State FAP, Financial Assistance Program, that's money the state provides to EMS providers for service. Depending on your coverage area, how many population you're serving, there's a formula, but it's somewhere between four and eight thousand dollars. If you bump up to that eleven thousand or twelve thousand number I said before, your revenue goes up to about five-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand, and that's using that fifteen-dollar-per-capita number. You can go ahead. So that's the money in the door. Potential money in the door. The money going out the door is what it costs to run the operation. We looked at comparable pay rates for firefighter EMTs in the general area, and right now, a lot of your neighbors are looking for firefighter EMTs also. So a quick Google search didn't, found that those five departments have ads out right now for firefighter, paramedics actually, which would be one step higher than the AEMT level, and their starting pay is between fifty-five and sixty thousand dollars. So we used the number, the top salary, because that's starting pay, so and you got to factor in, people are going to probably want to have a pay stop or a scale. When we put together a budget projection, we started them at fifty-five thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty dollars and topped them out at fifty, sixty-three thousand, nine-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars. So that's the scale we're using when we're putting our numbers together. You can go ahead. So this chart, it's, it's in your, it's in the written report. This details out not only the salary costs, Wisconsin retirement system costs, social security, and then other benefits you provide to employees. So the bottom number on the bottom right is six-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand, five-sixty-two and fifty-five cents. So that's, this is the added staff that we are, this report suggests you add to provide the service. It provides EMS, it provides EMS and additional fire service. Other costs you need to consider, your vehicles, ambulances will range anywhere between two and feet, three-hundred-and-fifty thousand, depending on what you're buying. Loose equipment, cardiac monitor alone is about thirty thousand dollars if you're buying a higher-equipped monitor. The cot that comes in and out, that lifts, reduces back injuries, it does work for the money, but those alone are probably sixty thousand dollars included in an ambulance cost. So you also have reliser costs, depending on what your relationship with your employees, are you paying for them to re-license every three years? Or are they paying for that? It's different in each community that I've worked in. And then your equipment maintenance, your disposable supplies. So one thing that you need to factor in, and this is based on call volume, wasn't in the scope of what we're doing here, but you are going to have supplies you use to treat the patients that those fees are, are supposed to cover. So right now, that number doesn't factor in what you then pay a vendor for buying your supplies and all that other kind of thing. It's really the, the revenue is revenue. Your expense that we're showing here is personnel expenses. So you need to consider that you're probably going to have, I'm going to guess, somewhere twenty to thirty thousand dollars in disposable supplies a year that you use, that you're, and depending on what level of service you're providing, how many calls you go on, that type of thing. So overall, the report shows from a salary perspective about six-hundred-and-ninety-six, six-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand dollars in additional salary. Where you're currently paying your salary on your fire chief and captain, there is a recommendation in there regarding the salary for those two positions to be adjusted. And that we took as a separate item out of the scope of EMS because those employees are here today, so that's not included in this number. Depending on your contracts, you have revenue that can go between five-hundred thousand and five-hundred-and-thirty thousand. So you will have, depending on how you negotiate those contracts, a definite impact on your levy or some other source to fund that service. How you fund that is within the scope of the, in your job in the city council to figure that out. But it's a tough, tough, tough question to answer with the restrictions on levy in municipal government in the state of Wisconsin right now. So with that, I would be open to as many questions as you'd like to ask.
I turned that off, okay. Floor's open, any questions? Yes?
I have one to kick it off. And I, I, I'm not familiar with our, the way our current fire department is organized, but what does our part-time assistant chief, fire chief do? And how, you know, is there something different we could be doing there? For example, two captains, but then not having an assistant chief or having a full-time assistant chief? I'm just curious if you looked at any variations there?
We did. We talked about somewhat, we had a discussion on our team about succession planning. And the chief has indicated that he may at some point retire, just like all of us. Hopefully someday we'll retire.
Don't be pushing him out the door now.
He's sitting in the corner being quiet.
I see him there. I looked over there to make sure he was listening.
But we, we talked about on our team, so you have a part-time assistant chief now. At some point, you're going to need a, we would recommend a transition plan for someone to take that spot, to learn the ropes. So the, that position actually, probably in the, in the bigger report when we're done with the whole report for the city, there likely will be a recommendation in there to talk about, is that a short-term plan that maybe you bring in a, a second-in-command on a full-time basis with the anticipation of a transition? Maybe not, that's not a long-time, a long-term plan to have two full-time people in those positions, but is that a short-term plan to successfully transition the organization? That's, if you were to go ahead with this plan, would have a lot of change in a short type, period of time.
Yeah, and I saw there was kind of a little bit of an allusion to that in the report, and I don't know if this is maybe slightly different, but what I'm getting at is I'm wondering if we would go in the direction of having two full-time captains, could they potentially also absorb whatever role the assistant chief currently plays in a part-time capacity?
Could.
I don't know, and I don't know what the duties are, so I don't want to make assumptions about that, but...
Yeah, it could, and I think over time, that's something that as people change in positions, that would be a potential opportunity to, to look at and, and take on some of that work.
And it potentially would not be as much of a financial increase then in terms of increased number of positions if that was a transition plan?
Yep.
Okay.
Looking at the structure that you've proposed, would the plan be that the fire captain and the EMS captain be hired through our police and fire commission? Or would they be hired by the fire chief?
So that, under state statute, they would be hired, appointed by the fire chief, but confirmed by the commission, is I believe how the statute reads right now. Is that correct, Dan?
That's, that's correct, yes, well-stated.
Thank you. Yes?
Steve Fields, I know I always want to say, I volunteer in the Lake Mills EMS, so I've been on a volunteer for eight and a half years. I guess my question, when you went through, I wish you could share these slides with us when we're done, because there was a lot more information on the slides than what we see in the report, more details, if that was helpful.
Yep.
My question is, the current system is running with three ambulances to generate the three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. You're proposing to run two ambulances, generate the same amount plus possibly more. I guess I'm curious, because you're, we're not going to be able to support different events in town. Some of them, them are the actual paying events that we generate money off of currently. So how are you going to take less resources, less equipment, and generate the same or more money?
Based on the call volume, it's our opinion that two ambulances can handle the work that is happening. And unfortunately, with the work level or number of people available, I can't see that either service, to tell you the truth, whether it's the fire department or the ambulance, is going to have the ability to staff three ambulances on a regular basis. I just don't see that. I see, I see that's a rarity versus a common occurrence.
I understand going forward that's the issue, but you're counting revenue that a third ambulance is generating right now. third ambulance is generating right now. And you're assuming you're going to be able to make that up. Because that third ambulance does generate revenue during the course of the year.
It does. There's also some calls that are not getting responded to that I would assume you're calling mutual aid for right now. So, there's some revenue that you're, someone else is picking up that you're missing. So, I, I guess, in my opinion, looking at that, it would be a, a close, a washout.
I can agree with some of that, but at the same time, when I look at your schedule, you're only going to schedule five guys on a day shift. If there is a fire call, all five of those guys are leaving, you've got nobody in the station to respond to medical calls.
Yeah, they...
Or if there's a mutual aid where fire has to go to Waterloo or Fort Atkins Center, Watertown to help out, and they do a lot, you have nobody at the station for medical. And that was part of the reason why our former city manager wanted us to terminate the contract when it hit 15, is he want, for that kind of money, he wanted two full-time ambulances staffed in his town for that kind of money. So, I'm kind of curious how we can go to zero.
I think the fire department would need to have a callback plan, which is not uncommon in most agencies, to say, if we are committed on an incident, we're calling people in, that paid-on-call staff would become, and again, integral part of the operation.
I just, when I add up your labor hours, I see that it adds up there, but you're not really accounting for any of that callback numbers or, you know, just from being involved in some of this, that, to me, the labor hours seem pretty short.
Yeah.
A little bit light.
Light, that, that's the staffing hours, we did, we're not accounting for call-in hours.
Correct. Yep. So, there's some additional costs. And your 696,000, I think it was, for labor?
Yep.
That's just to man the first ambulance. There's no cost in labor for a second ambulance or operating expenses. That's just basically staffing the first ambulance that we have.
During the day, you would have two ambulances to be able to be staffed. There'd be the two full-time people and either the two captains or a paid-on-premise and a captain, depending on what the day of the week and how they schedule hours.
So, them five people would man both ambulances?
Potentially could have two ambulances go out at the same time.
Right. And then there's no fire staff in the station?
They, they'd have to have a plan to call people in.
And that's why, I guess, I'd like to see an operating plan, because if we have a 10-50 like we did on this last Saturday, when you're calling ambulance and fire, what is the sequence or how do we, is it the fire going out first and we're trying to find ambulance crew? Or is it ambulance going out, we're trying to find fire crew? There's a lot of, right now, with the two separate agencies, you always get a fire truck and you always get an ambulance. How are we going to make sure that happens?
I don't, I, I don't want to defer to the chief, but he's standing behind me, so I'm assuming he has something he wants to...
Yeah, I just want to touch on that a little bit. Like Chief said, the paid-on-call are always going to be a part of the department. And that's one advantage of bringing both agencies under one management, is you can direct where your resources are going, where they're, where they're needed the most. Yesterday, we had three calls. Fire was, was taking care of a gas leak and a carbon monoxide leak at one facility. Lake Mills EMS had a primary call, the rig was out. A secondary EMS call came. We were able to send four, I think there was three individuals to that call, along with the second ambulance. A third EMS call came in. Lake Mills EMS had nobody to staff that third ambulance. Fire went with four people. Okay? So, there's, you're talking three different situations. We had Jefferson EMS come over that Mr. Murphy requested. 30 minutes it took for, from the time Lake Mills Fire and EMS got paged to that call, to when Jefferson EMS got on scene, 30 minutes for an individual that was having a stroke. And we, the, we're, we're able to manage and prioritize our resources where they're needed, where they're going to go. Starting January 1, Mavis Division 118, which is Jefferson County, is implementing an auto aid dispatching for all structured fires. So, if it's here in Lake Mills, we, we have help coming. We don't have to request it. If, if it's someplace else, you know, we may be going. So, that, we, and the fire service, we're taking steps to be able to make sure we can manage multiple calls at a time. And that's the advantage of having cross-trained individuals, where, um, we can, we can do both, fire, EMS, whatever it is. And, and, you know, um, yes, you know, is, is the station big enough? The fire station's big enough. We can, you know, we, we have equipment that's housed in, in the station right now that's not property of the city of Lake Mills, it's Jefferson County. We, I'm already making arrangements to get rid of that. You know, we can rotate our boats, depending on the time of the year. So, you know, size of the, the station, no, we do not have to build a new fire station. So, I don't know if there's any other questions that you may have that I can answer?
Any other questions?
I do.
Are you, are you yielding, Steve? Mr. Fields? You're good?
Yep, I'm good for now.
Go ahead.
Okay. Actually, I think it's for him, but maybe you both could answer. The question, and maybe I wrote this wrong on my sheet when I was listening to you, but you mentioned that the total revenue for the idea that you had mentioned was 494,000 per year. Is that correct?
I believe it's about 350,000 on the cost for service revenue.
Yeah.
And then, depending on how you would negotiate, whether that's a per capita charge for your town contracts, um, you, right now, if you just take your per capita of what Lake Mills EMS gets from the city, I believe that's about $94,000. I'm just going to get to my right slide here. 94,000. So, you, that's a city revenue, it's currently in your budget today. So, that could see at about 340, I'm going to call it, 344,000, uh, 444,000. And then, depending on where you negotiate at with the other towns, that's where that remaining, I believe, 100,000 is. That's about 2050, let's see here. Yeah, just sort of 100,000.
Okay. So, the reason I ask is because the personnel compensation is $200,000 more than, than the revenue. And I'm just wondering, how, how are we going to handle that negative amount of money?
I'll jump in.
Thanks.
After staff knows the direction the city council would like to go as far as what level of service and how to provide that service, for example, municipal department, we will need to develop a comprehensive department budget, a comprehensive joint fire department, in this example, joint fire department and EMS department budget to present to this body. And with an analysis that will, my initial gut reaction tells me will necessitate us going to referendum to fund this, going to referendum to exceed our allowable levy limit in order to fund a service at this level, structured in this way. And so, after we, or after the city council has given that direction to staff, we will immediately begin working off of work that's already been done to bring forward a, a comprehensive budget that accounts for not just staffing, but operations, supplies, training, all the things that every department in the city has, and showing where, what that gap is. What is our gap in revenues that we're bringing on and expenditures that are going out? And we would then ultimately work with a financial advisor to draft an appropriate referendum, if that became necessary, on what exactly we would need to go to the community to ask for in terms of additional funding to exceed our, our allowable levy limit in order to fund this service.
Would that be, um, would it be preferable to do a referendum over just raising the rate? Per capita?
We can't.
Okay.
So, it's a little bit, it's a little bit different now. So, EMS charges, the, Lake Mills EMS is a 501(c)(3), charges a per capita rate...
Right.
...to its contracted municipalities in order to partially fund its operations. The city, as a municipality, is limited in the ways that it can generate revenue. So, our main source of revenue is our, our property tax levy, so the property taxes that we collect. As Mr. Whitaker noted, there's no way to, for municipality to levy separately, to collect revenue separately from that, that wouldn't count towards our levy limit. And so, in order to increase our revenue adequately, we would likely need, I can't say for certainty, because we haven't built the, the comprehensive budget, but we would likely need to go to referendum to exceed our allowable levy.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
So, I, I think Michelle had some, some things there that, that made sense. When I, when I do the numbers considering the revenue that we can get, um, from charging for services, for the city per capita, for the township per capita, we come in about 100,000 short of the wages. Or labor, I guess, is the right way to say, because it includes benefits. And then, there's going to be extra, extra things there that we have to have, like the equipment. So, I'm not sure how much that's going to add to this bill. But if we raise that per capita from 15 to a higher number, that's going to chew up some of that difference. And I, I, you know, I, I heard Mr. Murphy suggest that maybe that, that number is 65, and then there's a number, a different number that's being suggested by, by the Ryan Brothers' proposal.
Mm-hmm.
So, those are higher numbers than, than the 15 that's currently used in this calculation.
Um, correct. I believe, uh, I believe what Mr. Murphy was stating, that if you took the total cost of the, of providing municipal service and divided that out amongst the per capita rate, it would come to that 60 to 65 dollar rate as well. You are correct that we could, we could, if we were successful in contracting with townships, we could look at the per capita rate and adjusting that as well as what the townships would pay to contract with what would be a city department, similarly to how they do with the fire department. So, there are additional options. And once we know, once we know that direction the city council would like to go, we will also need to start reaching out to our, our partners, other municipalities, the townships, the county, to see what kind of partnerships exist and what opportunities there, there are going to be for collaboration in this realm. I would remind the city council, I believe, Misty may know better than I do, we need to provide, the city council need to approve a resolution no later than 70 days prior to the April election, in order to have a referendum placed on that ballot. It's an odd year, so the, we only have two elections. It's too late for February, and April will then be the only other opportunity for a referendum. And so, there will be a, there's a significant amount of work that does need to go into this effort after we know the direction that we need to go.
So, it'd be the second meeting in January?
Correct.
Okay.
At, at the latest.
Also, this proposal's both fire and EMS, so, yeah, I'm not sure how much we're charging the townships for the fire service, but that would, that would also fall into this equation as well.
Correct.
Okay. So, there's other revenue potentials. Not that we want to go after the townships for revenue, but there, it's just part of the, part of the calculation to figure out this number. So, this number's somewhere north of the 700,000 for labor. What is that number?
Um, we did not do a full assessment of supplies and costs as part of this study. My, my estimate...
So, this is a labor study?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I would say, if you take out your, your capital costs, so in other words, your ambulances, depending on how you fund your capital needs, and I, I'm not up to speed as to how the city's funding your capital needs right now, um, your, your operating costs that you'd need to consider is training of additional staff, supplies that we talked about before, um, and anything that would have to do with ongoing increased staffing in the station, because now your station is going to be staffed on a more regular basis. So, energy costs will go up, um, cleaning supplies, all that type of thing. I don't know if there's anything else you can think of, Chief?
No, but we can also reduce some of the current expenses or costs by having the full-time staff do the station cleaning and not the contracted service that we're currently paying.
Okay. So, there's some opportunities, uh, when you're looking at disenergies of, of bringing the fire EMS together and, and doing some of these things as well?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes?
Um, I guess I would just like to follow up a little bit more on the, the costs, and I appreciate Mr. Daley saying that you would need to prepare a budget, because that's what I was trying to do in my own notes and realizing I had some gaps in not understanding what different costs might be. Buying another ambulance is certainly going to be a one-time cost, but then I'm not clear on how we fund that moving forward, if that just goes into our capital, you know, rotating, and do, do we need to account for that in, in a levy increase? I'm not, I'm not sure how that works. Hopefully, you can guide us.
And what happens to the current equipment that Lake Mills EMS has?
Right. I mean, maybe there's some, some conversations that can happen there. The one thing I haven't heard mentioned too much tonight, though, would be that we, it sounds like the recommendation would be to use a billing company that has expertise in this, which is fine, but then they take a percentage of that revenue. So, we need to make sure we understand what that, you know, what the net revenue is after we pay a billing service, too.
Right. I, um, I would need to look at the revenue reports that we had, but generally, those companies are between 4 and 8%.
Okay.
Depending on what services you're asking them to provide for you. And, uh, so, I, I don't remember if that was off of the revenue that we reported, but I could follow up on that.
Okay. Okay. It, it strikes me that, and I'm talking to folks that, you know, work for other municipalities, I think that's pretty common to use an outside service, and they probably would have the expertise to know how to work with the different insurance, rather than like us hiring an administrative assistant to do that in-house.
Yeah, it would be our recommendation, you hire a company, not, I have not seen a good outcome of in-house billing on EMS in my career.
And not, certainly not for a community of our size. Yeah. Okay.
Yes?
I'd like to take a huge step back, Mr. Whitaker, looking at this recommendation that McMahon is making, and look at the big picture and the justification to our citizens of this plan. And the plan as presented, without all of the costs, is almost a million dollars for the first year, taking into account a full year, which, if you doubled the per capita rate, we would still only be at a quarter of a million dollars at most for a contracted service. What is McMahon's justification for a four-fold increase in costs to the city and why this is the best out of all of the recommendations and options McMahon considered?
So, so either way, your, your current system is not functioning. So, what you're doing today is, is not working. So, you, the increasing service or improving service costs money. I, I, so, I guess that would be a start. I know that's not the answer to your question.
No, I know. And I think there are legitimate questions as to whether this is an improvement in service or not, and those are things that we'll have to battle moving forward. So, I just want, like, why did you guys discount another contracted service, knowing that it's the cheaper option and could provide two to three ambulances with an AEMT level of service?
Yeah, I, I, I reviewed the contractor, that the proposal they put in the packet, I, I reviewed that prior to the meeting tonight. Those companies are as much struggling to find people to work as anyone else is right now. I would have a concern, I think Mr. Murphy expressed it earlier, that the system that probably would be operated would be a single ambulance in the community here. And we looked at the system, and I, this is not a criticism of their providers, of any private company, but the private company is going to chase the revenue. And if there's a call to be had in another area, they're going to go take care of that call. And at times, private companies struggle to meet the response times that the communities are looking for, unless there is a guarantee in the contract or some sort of penalty in the contract, that they don't meet that. And that's the only... that they don't meet that. And that's the only, I would recommend if that's the option you're looking at, you put a penalty in a contract with, with a provider. And I don't know that those providers are going to agree to that at this point in time. So you have, you have your ambulance that we're addressing, but we're also addressing the need for the fire department. So I, I think it, it's only a fair compare, it's only a fair statement to make that this provides improved service for EMS and fire. Because I think, nothing against the leadership of the fire department, they're doing everything they can, but unfortunately, the model of service is probably a couple of years from now, if you don't change your model of service in your fire department, you're going to have the same conversation you're having today about EMS is can we even respond? Can we get a vehicle out the door? There was a report in the city manager's report I saw in the packet, there was a call that you couldn't get a vehicle out the door to respond to. Or the ambulance service couldn't get a vehicle out the door to respond to. So I think when a citizen looking at that and saying that, that's my, if I had to be in your shoes as, as elected representative, this guarantees you a response twenty-four seven through sixty-five of someone on duty with a backup plan that the department would implement. And you're not wondering who's coming at what time of day.
Thank you, Mr. Whitaker. And a follow-up question based on something you said. What would you consider in your experience to be an appropriate response time for emergency services, whether fire or medical, in a city the size of Lake Mills?
So I strongly believe, in my professional opinion, that the, the right model, there are state, national standards that people publish and that are, that they study. And I can recite those right now and I can tell you exactly what it says. It's my strong professional belief that each community sets the desired level of service they want. And it's a job of a chief or a director or whatever you want to call the person that's in charge of that service to design a system to meet that standard. Because that's what you, you as elected representatives decide to pay for. So I can, I can bring a service that says, we're going to have three-minute response times. And, and the chief probably, and Mr. Murphy can probably, I'll do this too. And I'm going to tell you, three minutes, it's going to be a lot of money. It's going to cost you a lot of money. I can get you something at ten minutes, it's going to be less money. I can get you at twenty, it's going to be less money. And I can get you at thirty and it's probably going to be pretty cheap. So my opinion is not meant to set a standard. One of the models that I strongly believe in as a professional is the model that the elected officials of citizens drive what level of service they want. And then it's a job of a chief or a director as a professional to then interpret that model and work with the city manager and the staff to do that. But with that said, in your more, I'll call your more city area, not your rural area, I would say an average of eight to ten minutes on the high end would be an acceptable response time. If you look at a national standard for what they call an urban area, which I think, I don't necessarily recommend, say that Lake Mills is urban, but it's, that there are areas that are a little more densely populated. Six to seven minutes is a common average response time in those communities. You get out in the rural areas, ten to fifteen minutes is probably an expected response. And I think people who live in rural areas generally have to sort of, they may want a quicker response time, but it's part of living in a rural area too. You're not going to get it. So when you look at science and things that back up those numbers, someone who's not breathing has about four to six minutes without any help before they are pretty much at a very low level of survivability. That's where some of those six, seven-minute numbers come from in the professional side.
Any other questions? Michelle?
Yes.
Ms. Quinn, no?
Yes. Thank you for answering my calls with regard to the, the monetary element of this. And trust me when I tell you, we are like, we've, we've had a lot of meetings about these options and discussed nauseam the, the details down to how many staff, how many ambulances, how many this, how many that. Just a really weird question, I guess I thought of was, does the captain participate in calls? Because we're counting him in, him or her, I shouldn't be too specific. Him or her as, as, as a, as a personnel on site. Is that something that's common?
If they go on calls, I just want to make sure I understand your question.
Yeah.
Yeah, they definitely need to be considered in that staffing matrix. So there's going to be some days in what our recommended matrix is and there's flexibility in that matrix as to, it doesn't have to be on Friday, we have a part-time and a captain. They can make it what they want to make it. It was just a way to demonstrate how many hours a week you have to cover. There's going to be days when there's going to be two captains potentially going on the second ambulance, depending on how the schedule works. So.
Okay. So that being said, I guess I'm, I'm just trying to understand the, the, the way that you have set it up. Because like I said, we've really just scanned over all of these and we're hoping that the staff studies that you're providing gives us just really a concrete answer. But unfortunately, I kind of feel like I have more questions than I have the concrete answer. Because as much as I like the idea of a combined, after the discussion with, with the monies, I just want to make sure that we as a municipality, obviously referendum aside, are not going to be in the red and/or costing our citizens an extraneous, extr- extraneous, extraneous, I don't know, amount of money to, to, to receive this service. And I recognize that there won't be a, a per capita amount because we don't do that for fire, do we?
For your contract for your townships, I'm not sure how you negotiate those. I think it's just.
Assess values.
It's assessed values. So we're going to kind of look at doing that same thing with, if, when, if we decide to combine the two, that we instead of looking at it per capita, we would look at it more as an assessed value? Or, or how do we, how are we assessing how much each citizen is going to be paying overall when you cut down to it?
It would have to be negotiated in a, in a contract with those participating municipalities. What I can tell you is that for the city taxpayers, they would be funding, they, their portion of these, these costs would be funded through the property tax levy.
Right.
The other costs for the other contracted services would have to be a mutually agreed upon contract on how to, to obtain a, a fair and equitable contribution in exchange for the service they would be receiving.
So when you say they're, they're going to get it in their tax, in their, in their, in the tax levy, how much are we looking at here? Per person, do you think? Or not per, well, per household?
I can't answer that for you right now.
Okay.
We will be able to. If we, if we develop the comprehensive budget, I, we would be able to provide you with the, the impact on, on the city residents for funding this. But tonight, I, I don't have that number for you.
Thank you.
Maybe just to follow up and just so I can wrap my own head around this. So in our 2023 budget that we approved a couple of meetings ago, that has, I believe around a hundred and eighty thousand, give or take, for the year for emergency services. Is that right? So that, you know, some of that is budgeted toward Lake Mills EMS and then some of that is, you know, just a placeholder for what we'd have for the rest of the year. And so if we would move forward with this recommendation, you'll be putting together a budget that will tell us how much that would need to go up, for example, right?
The number that sticks out in my brain is a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars is budgeted for EMS services right now, which is a fifty percent increase over what it was this year. So that is, that is built in. That's what currently is in our budget to provide this service. So that exists for us to continue to spend on this service. So it would be what in addition to that do we, do we need to raise, to fund in order to pay for the service?
Any additional questions or comments? Yes?
Mr. Whitaker, I'm trying to make sure I understand the staffing recommendation where you gave Sunday through Saturday in the hourly breakdown, who would be there in those hours? And it, my question is based on Mr. Field's questions and then your answers. So, um, for instance, if we look at like Tuesday, zero, seven hundred to seventeen hundred hours, you have two full-time firefighters slash A E M T because they're cross-trained, right?
Right.
And then two full-time captains. And I understand that based on your answers to be the staffing for the whole department. So if there's a fire call, those people are going to jump out and go on a fire call first. And then the remainder would go on a medical call if they needed to.
Correct, depending on what that makeup is.
Sure. So it's the whole mishmash of services. This is not just staffing for only the emergency medical side.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And currently during that same time period, Tuesday during the day, what kind of staffing do we have?
Right now you have one of those, one captain is on duty during the time. I did not include the chief in the chart, but he's generally there during the day.
Okay.
And that would actually be it in the station. Physically in the station, you have on-call then to support them.
So currently it's one. This plan would be four people.
Right. So one of the four is already somewhat funded in your budget, depending on where you land on compensation for that position.
Yep.
Yeah, probably a joint answer.
I saw you hit the button, so I figured you were ready.
I do. It's probably a joint answer for Mr. Whitaker and Mr. Daley. For the referendum issue, McMahon is giving a six-month lead time to prep all of this to be fully operational as a joint department. I mean, going out to referendum in April, we can do all the planning possible, but if for some reason the funding is stalled or, or even if we get the funding because the referendum passes, we're still a few months behind on that lead time that McMahon is recommending. So with the gap in service that could happen, what's, how do we fulfill that? And I know we're going to talk about this more later, but like what, what's the recommendation there if there is a gap in service?
We either have to shrink the timeline that they've recommended. Largely, I would say that it would be, I, I don't know that it would be appropriate to begin recruiting for these positions that are not yet funded by a referendum. So would we be able to start recruiting in January for another captain and firefighters slash E M Ts? No, we would not be able to do that. We would need to start, we would have to start that process after we knew that we are receiving the funding necessary to fund the solution. So we would either have to shrink that timeline down from approval in April. I believe the spring election is early in April this year. So we would have to immediately following, immediately know, after knowing the result of that, take steps to, to either implement what we were seeking funding for or find an alternative solution if that referendum were not to pass. It will be a condensed, it will be a condensed timeline and it will be, it will be a, a, a significant amount of, of work in order to, to bring this to fruition. One option that on a short-term basis you could consider is you do have current part-time staff that may not want to work on a long-term basis, a full twenty, fifty-six hour a week schedule, which is what we're recommending. But they may be able to fill those gaps until you could bring in your, your full-time staff or convert your part-time. Some of your part-time people may want to be full-time people. And so you may have some people already on the department that says, hey, I'm interested in doing that. So there may be some opportunity internally. I have another client that we're working with in a similar situation. They had a successful referendum. And they are able to use some of their current part-time staff that are interested in being full-time. So they're trained and ready to go. It's just adding their hours and getting them on the schedule now.
Yeah.
Just a thought along those lines and then a couple of questions. And, and I'm assuming, Chief Yandre, Yandre, you'd have all kinds of ideas about how to do this, but there would certainly be things if, if we were to move forward with this recommendation, you know, working on updating the position descriptions, you know, working on policies, working on training plans, you know, things to get ready to do the hiring, assuming that the referendum passes, maybe even doing some of the prevention inspections early so that that captain's ready to help, you know, onboard new people. I'm sure there's some things that you can do to kind of get ready. So we would certainly count on you for that. A couple of things that I had shared from constituents. One is an internship program, which I know some other communities do. And I don't know if that would be kind of an add-on to us making this decision or if that can be part of a staffing solution. I know it certainly helps with, you know, bringing, at least from what other communities I've observed, you know, it helps get people interested in this line of work and then maybe coming on full-time. So is there any role for putting an internship program into a staffing, a new staffing approach for this department?
Yeah, so I am a big, I would say internship programs are great. The Madison College has a, a program established with other departments that I think you could look into. There are some legal issues with relying on interns to be, maintain your staffing that other departments in this area have recently had challenges with and were not successful in, in winning that fight. So I would say don't rely on them to staff. If you say I need two E M Ts twenty-four seven, you don't want to include an intern as one of those because you're going to run into some federal labor issues.
Okay, that's a good, that's a good caution. And I guess the other thing, I don't know where this fits into the exploration, but you did mention, you know, collaborating or maybe merging or shared services with another entity. I think probably the closest community maybe is Waterloo or maybe Jefferson or Johnson Creek, you know. So I don't know if that's something we should be looking at at the same time or if we should just get a plan started of our own and then before we start the staffing, see if there are opportunities there to, you know, somehow merge. I don't, or share.
I, as far as that opportunity, I would say yes. I think that is the, going to be the future in communities in, like this area. You're, you're all, your neighbors are, and to not name names, but are calling us for suggestions with similar problems that you have right now. So you're all talking about the same thing. Which tells me, yes, you should be talking to your neighbors about those issues. Do you, you have a short timeline to fix an immediate problem though? So you need, either way, I would say you will, from the situation you're in today, if you work in, into a regional model at some point, you're going to pay at minimum what we have in the model. So you're not making a mistake starting to implement the model and then exploring those opportunities as you keep moving forward.
I guess I'll just comment on, on your question. Last week I had initial conversation with a chief. And we're up to three of us now. Next Thursday, we are getting together to start discussing the very near future because, you know, like Chief said, you know, we're struggling, you know, Lake Mills Fire and EMS, but there are communities next door that are in a lot worse shape than what we are. And we need to get together and start thinking outside the box to see what we can do on a bigger scale. So, you know, not that, you know, we can stop our, you know, process, but, you know, there, there are options out there that we need to look at and we've been talking about it. I think a couple of years ago, we, we, I came to the council about shared services, but at that time, one of the communities backed out. And now they're back at the table. So we'll see where it goes.
Thank you.
So you referenced the auto aid on the fire side. Is there something like that being discussed about the EMS side of the business?
I don't know if they would do an auto aid. I, I mean, I can't speak right now currently, you know, maybe Dave or Tom can. but, uh, um, you know, for fire, it's for structure fires. It's not for car fires, grass fires, or anything like that. It's for, um, structure fires.
Okay.
But, uh, you know, both services, fire and EMS, have mutual aid. So, you know, that's what helped yesterday out with Jefferson EMS coming over, is a mutual aid agreement.
Right. So I know there's been talk about Jefferson County somehow developing some type of system, and, and we're probably already too late to hatch two thousand twenty-three 'cause we're in the budget process, uh, but maybe two thousand twenty-four, Jefferson County can look at it as a whole. And I, and I do appreciate that Anita Martin stayed for this whole meeting, and she's been taking great notes, uh, one of our representatives for Jefferson County. So, um, we'll have to see what we can do there, but that would be, of course, a partnership opportunity to develop something county-wide, so.
There's a, uh, just something that, to be interested in or look at may, from a co- speaking of counties, Ozaki County is, uh, doing something interesting with their municipalities, and in essence, creating a grant program using ARPA funds that the county got, uh, because they have very similar issues that you have here. And they are providing some incentive programs to communities, uh, to fund paramedic positions. Now, it doesn't necessarily always have to be paramedic positions, but that's what they decided to do, uh, using the ARPA money at the county level to the municipalities. And then there was additional funding if communities worked together in a consolidated or regional model that the county was willing to provide. It's, it's not ongoing funding, it's some one-time funding to get your service up to speed. Um, but it's an interesting model to look at that, uh, they're doing right now.
Great, thank you.
I have one.
Yes?
Um, this is for Mr. Daley. So by my calculations, it looks like we would have to get whatever information we need to do a referendum out by, and I believe that Ms. Curler said it by, looks like about January twenty-fourth. Um, that puts us about five weeks away, including the holiday. Is that feasible?
I believe it will have to be.
I'm just trying to account for, you know, staff being able to relax a little bit for the holiday and not feel like they have to, um, quickly get something in. But I, you know, if this is something that we're looking for or if this is the direction that we give you, um, I don't want them to hate us for, for putting this on them because it's gotta be done by the end of January.
It's just the date, has to be done by then.
Yeah, I know.
Any other questions on this proposal?
I've, I have one more, which may just wrap up the conversation. Mr. Whitaker, we gave McMahon a very short timeline to prepare this recommendation, and I do appreciate your thoroughness. Um, with that short timeline in mind, is there any information that you feel like you were missing or wish you had that would shore up the recommendation or give any further insight on this issue?
Um, no, I, I think we were able to gather the information, both the EMS service, the chief and his staff, and the nine-one-one, uh, um, department or the county nine-one-one gave us some information that we needed. Um, there's always, when you're talking about EMS revenue, there's always the what-if. How many calls are we gonna have? Who's gonna pay? That's, you know, bu- business, any private business or entity runs into that. So did I, did I wish I had that number? And I could tell you, yeah, you're gonna have this amount coming in, and this is what it's gonna be, and this one's costing, yeah, but I feel like we had enough information to make a solid decision that we have for any other project we do.
Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you. I, I agree with, uh, what Mrs. Bishop said. Thank you to the fire department for providing data, and Lake Mills EMS for providing their information as well to, uh, to make this recommendation. So, uh, thank you for, for all involved. And, um, thanks for, uh, for spending the late night with us tonight.
It's, uh, night meetings are my specialty, I think lately. You have all different places you're at. Um, but it, our, our, our scope continues on other areas. So, um, you know, we're, we value the relation, the company, me, my, my boss, everyone that I work with, value the relationship to maintain a client, too. So w- we're here to provide more information. And one of the, our keys in success as part of our organizational culture at McMahon is to see our recommendations implemented. It's easier for a consultant to give you a report and walk away and say, see you later, and you never, and I can write whatever I want. Um, a- and there are people that do that. Um, one of the things that we talk about in our, in our culture is we want to see it through to success, uh, and work with the client to see it through to success. And that's a gauge of our success and ability to, to go to the next person that calls us and says, hey, what'd you do? You know, we wanna work with you. And that's something that we take pride in, is to see that succeed. So, uh, you know, I can't promise you a, promise you the world, but I can tell you that we have and want to maintain an ongoing relationship. And, and there's, I'm sure gonna be more information you have, and we're willing to be part of that discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Whitaker.
Yep.
All right. Uh, before we go to the next steps here, there's another proposal that's in the, uh, in the packet tonight, and that's the Ryan Brothers' proposal. Um, I don't think there's anyone here from Ryan Brothers looking out into the crowd. Um, but city staff, have any, any comment on this proposal?
Um, I guess in general, it is a, um, it's a private option that is, is available to the city to contract purely for EMS services. Um, their proposal is for one staffed ambulance in the community, um, assuming that the entire, what's currently serviced by Lake Mills EMS also joined, um, into that new venture. The proposed rate is twenty-nine dollars and fifty cents per capita. Um, if it were reduced to, for example, um, just the town of Lake Mills and the city of Lake Mills, that per capita rate increases to somewhere between thirty-two and thirty-three dollars per capita. Um, so we would need to, um, we would need to find a place to, for them to operate out of. Uh, if we were not able to find a place for them to operate out of, in their proposal, I believe it states they would commit to charging us their costs for whatever it is that they needed to establish a, a, a headquarters of sorts in, in Lake Mills. Um, so obviously, it's, it's a different, it's a different level of service. They do, they do provide paramedic-level service, but it's a one ambulance, uh, staffed ambulance. Um, they do indicate that they have other apparatus in the area that they would call upon in the event that their, that ambulance was busy and another call came in. Uh, they indicate that they would utilize that apparatus to fulfill the needs, um, of the community. Um, uh, but that is a, 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 the private option that some council members had, had expressed interest to me in, in exploring. And, um, you can, if there's questions about their proposal, I can do my best to answer them or take some notes and, and reach out to them, uh, and, and report back at our next meeting.
All right, questions, comments? I, I did notice that they were, uh, they used a number in their, in their proposal that they're providing a service to Fort Atkinson for five dollars and seventy-five cents per capita, where they're recommending something that's five to six times higher for us. Um, it's kind of a head-scratcher. Do you know why our proposal's so much higher than, than what they're talking about for Fort Atkinson?
Uh, I don't specifically. Uh, Mr. Fields is indicating he may have an answer.
What would help them in Fort Atkinson was that they supplied two ambulances. One was dedicated to nine-one-one, and the second one did inner facility transfers. There's actually more money in the inner facility where you're picking somebody up at the hospital, returning them to home or returning to the assisted living or nursing home.
So Ford has a hospital?
Right, their hospital is right there, so their station was next to the hospital. So one ambulance was basically in perpetual motion, taking people to a different hospital or back home, and that generates money on every, on every transport. Where some of the transports now don't generate much money. So it's actually more lucrative to have that second ambulance to an inner facility.
So we need to be looking at a hospital?
It would definitely change the perspective of things, but, but that's why their price was able to be so low. They actually generated more money with their second unit than they could their primary unit.
Okay, thank you.
That's how I believed it worked best for them.
But then, as I recall, Fort Atkinson did just do a referendum, right? And they are moving to a in-house staffing model?
That's correct.
I don't know what their timeline is, but they just did a referendum.
I believe, Chief Yandre, you may know, January one.
January one, okay.
January one, they transition, uh, to the, their new service model.
That's a combined fire slash EMS?
Correct, career department.
Okay.
I was gonna say, I got one other quick question. Have you talked to Ryan Brothers, um, personally about their proposal at all? 'Cause I know they, I, I believe that they were purchased by a different agency or somebody, that they, they changed hands last month? So there's new leadership there?
I, I, I have heard that there was a purchase going on. I have been in contact with, um, the, my contact has been with Cody Lutson, who is, I believe the title is Director of nine-one-one Services, as well as, um, I've had some contact with Aaron Ryan, uh, directly as well.
Okay, I just heard that they had, they had changed hands this last month, so I didn't know if that made a difference on this.
The letters date in November thirtieth, so hopefully it's still, you know, fairly current.
Any other comments or questions?
Just, I think it's just helpful to have this, um, this information or just kind of knowing what they could potentially offer if we do get into a situation where we have a gap that we have to cover. This is the kind of contractor that we might need to be working with, even if it's just for a gap.
Anything else? All right, so next steps, uh, we need to provide direction to city staff. There need to be, uh, what I'm hearing is a budget development. That needs to happen very rapidly because if we're going to go to a levy, we need to do that by the second meeting in January to, uh, put that proposal together and get, get council approval. There's also, uh, out there, maybe in the future, but there's partnership opportunities that we need to investigate and look at, um, from some of these surrounding communities that was discussed tonight. And, um, and possibly the county in two thousand twenty-four having some type of a plan that, that would help support all these municipalities and the, in the county as well. So, um, it probably makes sense to have some type of workshop, city council workshop, to discuss this and, and provide some direction pretty rapidly. Um, that would probably need to happen in the next week or two. Um, does that seem like a logical next step? Or what is, what is your, uh, recommendations, Drake?
We certainly can have a workshop to discuss it in, in depth. Um, I would, I'll work with, I can work with Misty, Misty to, um, get a poll out for availability um, prior to the next, the next council meeting, or we could have it at, at the December twentieth, kinda council meeting as well, another discussion, or both. But, um, we can pull each of you to figure out when we can find time where everybody's available to have a work session to get into the details of these. And in preparation of that, we'll pull together as much, um, budget information as we can prior, um, prior to that discussion. Um, I would, I would say that we likely need to have, we do need to have some direction on what path we're going to take, um, by the second meeting, by the December twentieth meeting, in order for us to, um, have a chance of putting together the information needed for the potential referendum.
So there was some initial proposals done by Mr. Wilkie that, that could be used as a base, but of course, this proposal gives us some new numbers that we could implement into that and, and fill out that information maybe a little bit better or tweak it to, uh, to meet these needs.
Correct.
Any other thoughts, feedback?
Well, I guess I just had a question, maybe sort of a point of order. I noticed that this agenda item isn't, is noticed as a decision. So were you seeking a decision from us tonight? And, and what form, um, are you looking for?
Yep, I, I asked to have a decision on there to ensure that the council had the opportunity to take action if the council was comfortable doing so. Um, I would say that we, you, we don't need an answer tonight, but we will need an answer by the end of the meeting on December twentieth.
So can we get a formal resolution drafted for the twentieth? And then we can take that up at that point in time, is that?
It'll be, uh, we'll, we'll draft a motion on the twenty, we would have a motion on the twentieth, directing staff to prepare, um, essentially, prepare the comprehensive, ensure the comprehensive budget is ac- is as accurate as possible, and develop materials for consideration to put a referendum on the ballot.
If that's the direction council decides.
If that's the direction the council decides. Um, if that's not the council that the, the direction decides, then, you know, a lot of it will come perhaps out of, out of the work session. But either directing me to work with a, a private contractor in order to come, to come to terms, or whatever other solution, um, the, the council may, may have. If there's other options, we'll send you those slides, the other options that McMahon considered as well. If there's an option on there that the council feels strongly about pursuing, um, we would just need direction on, on which one you would like to pursue.
Yep.
I guess, um, maybe kind of a comment. Um, in some regards, I think we've been discussing this a very long time and have had a lot of information. And in other regards, um, you know, we have a lot of new information that we got with this report, and we, that's why we, you know, sought this, um, contract to get this report. Um, I feel like we need to try to move quickly so that staff can get everything together so that we can have the, the best likelihood of success. So I'm hoping that we can, if we need to have a work session, let's get it, you know, next week, Tuesday maybe, and, 'cause then that gives staff some time to put some more information together for us, but then also time to put some information together for a December twentieth meeting. So I, my preference would be to, let's just keep it moving. We've all been reading this stuff, let's try to keep that conversation going quickly.
How do we look next, the Thursday?
Thursday would work for me.
The fifteenth?
Tuesday is no?
Tuesday is a public works meeting.
But could we do it later? Like after public works?
Yeah, Tuesday I'll be traveling.
We're doing a work session, so do we need to have it in here? Or can we do it in a different room if there's public works in here?
Well, uh...
Well, I would be on public works, so.
She's not available during works meetings, yeah.
Okay, I'm fine on the fifteenth.
I'm good on the fifteenth. Are you?
I, I can be, I think I'm up in the air on that one.
What would be... I know there's police and fire commission, but that's usually only five minutes, so.
Be the intent or the, the purpose of a work session before a, a resolution on the twentieth that we would either vote on to approve or disapprove?
That's...
To give direction to the, uh, to the motion.
Whether it's to pursue a contracted service or a joint department or a split...
Right.
Is there additional information that we're seeking that we can tell the city manager at this point in time to start preparing?
I think we were looking for an idea about the cost to, um, our constituents. Overall, if I'm not mistaken, is that something that could be ready for?
To the best of our ability, we will bring as much financial information as we can bring to bear at that meeting for your full consideration.
Okay, so like, that's one thing that I'm interested in learning about, you know, just looking at the overall impact, um, to the, to the residents of the town and the city. But, yeah, we, like I said before, we are just, we have to move on, and we have to make a decision. And it may not be the one everybody likes, but it's the one that we need to make.
So Thursday, the fifteenth?
Are you good with that?
It's fine, okay.
You can make that work?
I, I will make it if I can, I promise.
After a certain time, if necessary, after a certain time.
I don't know, next, first weekend of July.
Uh, six o'clock?
Six?
Six o'clock?
Okay.
All right, any other, uh, discussions on the EMS topic? Does that work, Drake? All good?
Yes.
Thank you. I think that's the end of the meeting. We are not going to go, the agenda says that we're going to have a closed session. Hold that to our next meeting, the second meeting in December. Uh, so any future recommendations, or recommendations for future agendas at this point?
I had a question.
Besides EMS?
More just a question on scheduling. I recall at the beginning of this calendar year, we did not have a meeting on the first Tuesday in January because it was so close to the holidays, it wasn't really feasible for staff. And I don't know, Drake, if you'd have had a chance to talk to staff on whether you wanted to cancel the first meeting in January this year or not, this coming year.
We, at this time, we're planning on having that meeting in order. Without, if we don't have that meeting due to the schedules of UW River Falls, we would not be able to hear a presentation on the Sandy Beach survey until February. So we are going to, we're going to make that meeting a poss, make it happen.
Okay, thanks.
Any other future agendas?
I believe I emailed you, but I just want to put it out there that we should be considering or talking about the Rock Lake Activity Center in the future with regard to the way that, I know that there's discussions happening behind the scenes too, but a future agenda.
Yes.
Future.
Yes, I think we'll see that in the, in the near future.
Yeah.
All right, anything else? All right, seeing nothing else, this meeting is adjourned, 9:30.